Okay.
Hi, welcome to the Village of Buchanan June 3rd, 2025 Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberally and justly.
Okay, and in case of emergency, please use the door, the emergency exit here, or use the stairwell behind the elevator. Please do not use the elevator. Thank you. I am going to change the agenda a little bit. We are going to move the last item, number H, Anthony, to, we have a new hire here, and I've asked Anthony to read the, make a motion for the hiring of the new employee.
Good evening, everybody. So I would like to consider a motion to hire Anthony Penatieri as a laborer at an annual rate of $45,000 as of June 20th, 2025, contingent on passing all hiring requirements of the village. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. And you'll find that it's, it's a good group of guys in the Highway Department. They're, you know, they're good workers, they're good people, and they work hard for the village. Anybody want to make a comment? Okay. Randy, our Highway Foreman. Thank you, Randy.
Mayor in the board?
Yeah, so everyone can see, see who you are. Hope you're not shy.
Didn't want to say much. I just wanted to thank you guys for the, for taking our recommendation. And Anthony seems like a great kid, and he's going to be a great addition to, to our job here. So I want to thank you guys.
I think you may, you guys have been a good choice.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, Anthony.
Congratulations.
We'll do your best.
See you soon.
Nice job, Randy. Thank you.
We'll see you on the back of the garbage truck. Okay, and you don't have to stay through the meeting if you don't want, but if you want to see what's going on, you're more than welcome to stay. I jumped ahead, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, the workshop meeting, April 22nd workshop meeting, and May 6th Board Meeting. Any questions, comments on the minutes?
No.
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor? Okay. All right, under new business, we have done this before. We had, had a public hearing. I have to open another public hearing. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing regarding a renewal franchise agreement with Verizon. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we've had a public hearing before, and it's about renewing our franchise with Verizon. We already did it with Optum. And what happened is there was a glitch in uploading this, and so we are resetting, you know, the public hearing for tonight so that we can officially close this. So are there any comments? No? Okay. Like I said, we, we put this out to the public before the public hearing. All right, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I had to do, was have the open and close out. All right, the next is a motion toward a bid for the roadway improvement project 2025 to Morano Brothers Corporation. We had our engineer here last time, and he spoke about this, about what the project entailed. This is Church Street in Buchanan. This is near a nursery school. This is a road that's in need of repair. This went out to bid. There were five bidders. The work consists of asphalt milling and paving, the installation of drainage improvements along Church Street. Other related work shall include adjusting and repairing drainage structures and sanitary manhole structures, adjusting utility frames and covers degrade, as well as preparing, restoring, and cleaning the project area, all in accordance with the plans and specifications as directed by the engineer. So the lowest responsible bidder was Morano Brothers. The total base amount is $428,985. The bids range from that, and the high bid was $598,000. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the lowest bidder, the base bid, Morano Brothers, for the Road Improvement Project 2025. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The next is, we're going to be extending the bid, bid which was awarded on July 2nd, 2024 for the gate valve replacement project. The contractor is Pazella Brothers. He has agreed to keep the same rate, the same price. So I'd like to make a motion to extend the bid, which was awarded on July 2nd, 2024 for the gate replacement valve project. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next is, we discussed this at our workshop. There is our, we have a surplus fund balance. We discussed different projects that we could use this money for, and the board was in agreement for getting a new chipper, which is $51,000. A police vehicle, $65,000. So a total out of that will be $116,000. So I would like to also speak to the board at the next workshop to see if there's any other projects that they might be interested, or any other work that they might be interested in. The other is, I know the Fire Department, Buchanan Engine was here once before. The air truck needs repairs at an approximate cost of $150,000. Fortunately, we have a vehicle replacement fund for the Fire Department, so that will come out of the, that will come out of the vehicle replacement fund. The other money will come out of the surplus in the fund balance. So I'd like to make a motion, unless anyone has common or questions on that?
I have a question on the, the air truck.
Sure.
We are going to take bids. Assistant Chief is here. We're going to, I mean, $150,000 is, is what we're looking at as the top, right? So we are going to get bids on that. Hopefully, like I said last time, I hope they're aggressive bids. That doesn't seem, seems like a big number, something like that, but.
The biggest part of that is the new pressure.
Yeah. All right. No, I, I know it needs to get done, so hopefully we'll get good bids on it. We won't have to spend all that money.
I just had a question too, Mayor, in relation to the police vehicle. I, I saw Randy was good enough to put away, put together some useful information in relation to the condition of the existing squad cars. And I see where we have a lot of idle time on these cars, and it seems to be causing a lot of wear and tear. So my, my question is, on the new vehicles that we're getting, will they have the automatic shut-off device when?
They cannot because for emergency purposes, their computer always has to stay on.
Okay.
So if there's a patrol, the car always has to stay on.
Okay, so I wasn't sure if that was even a possibility or not. Okay.
It's funny, you said that. That's been complained to other people in regards to cars always being on, but all the equipment that's on, on the vehicle has to stay on.
They need it powered, yeah.
That's why I just wanted to ask.
Good question.
That was a good question, and I have the option on my car, and I hate that, so.
You can turn it on.
Yeah, I do. I hit the button because I'm at a stop sign, and it goes dead, and I was like, oh, no, no. So, but, all right. So I am going to make a motion to remove funds from the fund balance to purchase a chipper for $51,000, a police vehicle for $65,000, and then out of the Fire Department Replacement Fund, Equipment Replacement Fund, repairs to the air truck for $150,000. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dan, I'd like you to do the next authorizing employment of recreation personnel.
Sure. So we'd, I'd like to consider a motion authorizing the employment of recreation personnel for the camp at the following rates. Director, $5,100 for the season. Assistant Director, $4,800 for the season. Nurse, $25 an hour. Laborer, $18 an hour. Art Specialist, $16.50 an hour. Sports Specialist, $16.50 an hour. Senior Counselors, $15 to $16.50 an hour. Junior Counselors, $10 to $13 an hour, and Junior CITs, $4.50 to $8 an hour.
Okay. On a motion? To approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Steve, could you do the next?
Sure. Consider a motion authorizing the employment of recreation personnel for the pool at the following rates. Director, $25 an hour. WSI, $26 an hour. Lifeguards with various experience ranging from $15 to $17.50 an hour. The head guard gets a dollar more per hour when working as a head guard. And that's all for the pool staff.
All right, and would you like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion authorizing the employment of recreation personnel for the pool.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Awilda, the next, if you could do that.
I'd like to consider a motion waiving fee for UPK program to use the pavilion on June 26th, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, so information from officers and departments, justice reports for April 2025. We have one, is $1,733 was collected. The other is $4,833. Police report.
Police reports, the call statistics, they had, a majority of the calls were for other complaints. They had 32 calls for that. They had 30 calls for property checks. They also had 44 moving summons, three parking summons, and a total of 175 calls for the month of April.
All right, thank you, Awilda. Highway report, April 2025.
April 25, 25, monthly report, 69.82 tons of household garbage, bulk and dumpsters, 12.94 tons. Dumpster's only 15.42 tons, metal 2.39 tons, and seven TVs. The guys were busy getting prepped for the areas, especially the recreation areas, the ball fields, the pool was inspected by our inspector. The, had a Sherman Williams guy come out and talk about how we're going to use our new line painting machine. The chippers were active. We had a lot going on with, a lot, getting ready to do our, our summer duties with grass cutting and, and other, other responsibilities. And there is a bunch of pictures here that the guys were very busy in April. Very busy. Thank you to them guys.
Thank you. Waste water treatment plant, April 2025. I just had that in my hands. There you are. Thanks, Steve. Treated wastewater, 11 million gallons, sludge removal, 175 gallons. And there's six lab reports, one for Westchester County Department of Health, and six for the DEC. Okay, and everything looks okay over there. Building department?
So not, it looks like Peter's busy. There were some, there was 14 building permits issued or reviewed. Inspections required for newly issued permits, 12 inspections on file for permits and compliance inspections, 19. Certificates of occupancy, there was 15 issued. There's a court appearance for Blakely Avenue coming up. And there, there were zero, zero property maintenance issues reported and zero illegal apartments reported.
All right, thank you. Prosecutors report, there is nothing this month. Zoning Board Minutes, April 16th, received and filed.
Can we just go back to, with the prosecutor's report?
Yes.
I noticed that this has been kind of reoccurring. I don't know the last time I've seen a, a report from the prosecutor. Has anybody had contact with her, and is that a requirement of the duties of the prosecutor to provide a report monthly?
There is.
Has there been work going on by the prosecutor?
Not that I know, not that I know of. I mean, she doesn't report to me, but I have reached out to her.
Mm-hmm.
And she said, when I have something to prosecute, I'll prosecute it. Okay.
So is there nothing to prosecute, or there's just nothing being prosecuted?
There was a court proceeding regarding that piece of property on Blakely Avenue. And, and the court missed the, the notification to the property owner, so it was postponed to next month. So the prosecutor, they, they show up. Peter was there.
Okay.
We were ready to go, and, but the person never showed up and never got notified, so. Really, there should have been a report on that at least.
Okay, but that's the only pending.
I think she just sent an email.
And then there's also the special prosecutor for a different matter, correct?
Yes, I haven't updated on that yet, so I just put it down to get another different meeting.
Yeah, and he was waiting, I was waiting on some insurance for him. The insurance carrier was away.
But I did hear, probably a week ago now, and I think he, I met him here, he gathered a bunch of documents. That's what I think. The last time I heard from him, he had given me the insurance certificate, and he said that they were weeding through it. So I'm hoping that'll move along, but I'll touch base again, because he's a guy I do have contact with.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, attorney's report, did you just give us the report? The only thing I have is for executive session, thanks. Yes, okay, and it will be executive session for contractual negotiation?
Yep.
Okay. Both. Okay, good.
It's both.
All right. Administrators report?
I have something for executive session as well, the PBA negotiations, giving the board an update on that. The only thing I also want to report is just to let the board know, regarding the wastewater treatment plant, we're waiting for a response back from the state. We're going to release the energy funds for engineering costs. We've got a response just recently saying that we need to contact the DEC and NYSERDA. So we, so George sent an email to the DEC. The DEC says, we'll get back to you. I haven't gotten a response about that yet. So right now, Tom passed it to the DEC, and I don't know what the process, so we asked for the process. Did the process now be, did the DEC have to approve engineering? Then it goes to NYSERDA, and then back to the state to be approved for the release of the fund. I, we don't know what the process is, and we're still waiting for response. So I just want to let the board know, we're in a holding pattern right now, because George cannot do any work, because then we, there's no reimbursement at this point.
Right.
So I just want to let the board know, that's the only holdup at this point, is the funding of the release of the energy money.
Okay. I will speak to Tom Cogden. I have to speak to him about something with the DOB, and then my contacts at the DEC.
Yes.
And see how we can expedite and get that moving while the weather is working with us here.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, so. The, last Wednesday, I was at the New York Conference of Mayors Annual Meeting. I came back Thursday. I wanted to be at the, the village got a commendation, and I know, Marcus, you had sent an invitation to all the board members, the Westchester Municipal Planning Federation, and I was happy to be there. The previous, there was a previous board that had worked on, oh my gosh, a C1, C2 overlay district. It was almost a year that we worked on that, and there was a former planning board chairman that was on the board at the time, a former zoning board chairman on the board. And we looked at the 9A corridor. We were interested in, you know, encouraging development or, or fixing some of the properties there. So that's why the C1, C2 overlay district was created. Also, we took the time to look at the character of the village and what, you know, what we thought would fit there and what type of development we'd like to see. So the original direction was that it would be, it would be three stories to keep in line with the character of the village. But not only that, there was also a retail component to that, and we went back and forth many, many times. Some of the board members had wanted all retail on the first floor. Some were okay with just a little bit of retail. So then, you know, then developers came in, and then, you know, of course, that changed. And so, but it's still, it's a basis for the rest of the 9A corridor. You see some of the businesses having the commercial on the bottom and residential on the top is, you know, which was what we were looking to do, especially on the 9A corridor. And you see the old gas station down there, they took that down. The latest I heard is they're looking to put commercial on the bottom floor, two businesses, and then two apartments above. So that's the property course from Reggie Selig's. So you do, you're seeing some development in that area. So I wanted to show everyone, and I wanted to tell you what it said in their booklet. So we got a commendation for C1, C2 overlay zoning. "The village of Buchanan adopted a C1, C2 overlay district zoning along with companion design guidelines, planning document to promote and encourage business and residential development while beautifying the existing commercial corridor. Improve pedestrian linkage along Albany Post Road corridor and to connect development to the Village Circle Commercial District." So this is Westchester Municipal Planning Federation, 2025, commendation for outstanding planning achievement presented to the Village of Buchanan for the planning and implementation of a C1, C2 overlay zoning. So this is what this looks like. And with me was Nick Zachary, who was on the board at the time, and now is a current planning board chairman. And also, he was a, at one time, a planning, a zoning board chairman for many years. So Nick has extensive knowledge on village, you know, planning and zoning issues. And then also, our planner, Dave Smith, was there. So it was a nice evening. It was nice for the village to get recognized. And if we could just please put this somewhere downstairs in the hallway, that would be great. Okay. And then the only other thing I have is I was able to go to the Montrose or the Cortland, I still call it Montrose Fire Department, but it's Cortland Engine. And I was pleased to be there to represent the Village of Buchanan on Saturday at their parade and annual bazaar. Okay, thank you. Dan, what do you have for us this evening?
I just had a, I just had a couple items. Thank you for going and representing the village. In relation to the status on the employee handbook, where are we with that? I know we had a rough draft.
Yeah, I want to see if the board has any comment on it. I have some suggestions as well, so I'm working on it myself. So I emailed to the board. If, if you don't remember, Stephen, I'll resend it again. I just want to see if you guys have any comments first. After review it, and the board is okay with it, we got to send it to the unions for their review and approval as well. So first up, I want to make sure we're okay with it before we send it over to them.
Yeah, can we, can we set some kind of a deadline on that? I, I'd really like to get that wrapped up. This has been going on for, you know, several years.
You want to do a month from now?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Do a month, okay.
Let's, let's do a drop dead date, please.
You want to do it at the next workshop? Have the discussion on it?
Yes, please. Could we do that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
This way we get the ball rolling. It's one less thing on our plate, and we get it off.
Okay, good.
And then we, you know, we've got a handbook in place, which is more than needed. My other item was, I'd like to, you know, maybe at the next workshop too, discuss the need to form a centennial committee. Before you know it, we're going to have our centennial year coming up, and I'd like to kick around as to how we want to pursue forming a committee. You know, what types of things we want to line up in a way of celebrating that year. I don't know if we want to incorporate it throughout the calendar year, or if we just want to do one big celebration, but I'd like to move forward on trying to form a committee.
Okay, that's good.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Steve, what do you have for us?
Yes, I, again, thank you for attending the Westchester Municipal Planning Federation. I was out of town for business, but, you know, in regards to it, I think it's a testament to, you know, the implementation of the C1, C2 overlay zoning and with the AMS project. So I think, you know, that occurring 24 months ago, I think it's important that, you know, we recognize that the project that's going on now was, was, you know, one of the deciding factors in this, this award, and I think the, the village should be proud of that. Also, tonight, I know in the town of Cortland, there's a transit-oriented district meeting. For anybody who's not aware, that's a district that they're planning around the Cortland train station, so if anybody's interested in keeping informed in that.
It's posted on social media and our website.
It is, yeah. And then also, in the newsletter that was received, it was mentioned about the dog licenses to go to the town of Cortland. But I believe that was incorrect information. It should be the Village of Crow.
No.
No.
The licenses?
The license up there. The dog control is.
I thought that was, okay.
If you were going to go, the dog control would be all up in Cortland.
Okay, all right. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. And, and with the transit-oriented district, I know they have an, an area that they're looking at, and also Bobby Toll's property there. How many units? Has anybody seen how many units they're proposing?
They haven't shown any proposals yet, that I'm aware of.
Just curious, yeah. Okay, thank you. Awilda, what do you have for us?
So in response to the celebration that was had, I believe you went Wednesday? It was Wednesday?
Oh, for the Cortland Engine?
For this.
Oh, for this, it was Thursday.
Thursday, okay. I did not go because I was not part of that process. And I thought that the individuals who should be there were the ones who voted for the project and defended the project. I was not here at that time. Secondly, I spoke to the chief in reference to the dogs, and he said, because we had a resident that was really worried about how dogs, stray dogs are rescued. He said they're not really allowed to grab a dog and put the dog in their truck or in their cars, because they don't have accommodations for that. But he says that they usually know who the dog belongs to. They, if the dog is friendly, they look at the tag, and they do try to support in capturing the dog. But the resident was half-right. They're not really supposed to touch the dog, because if anything happens to the dog or happens to them, then there's a bigger issue.
Yep, it's a liability.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, thank you. Anthony, what do you have for us this evening?
A couple of things. So anyway, getting back to with George with the engineering expense, what we're going to look into. I asked George previously for, my question about this whole thing is, it's, it's a big number for the engineering expense on that project. Is it something that we should bid, that should go out to bid, or are we exclusively giving it to George? Because he is our engineer and our consultant, and he does a great job at that plant. But it is a big number that is going to be involved with engineering over there, because it is a tremendous amount of work. So I don't know if we should consider putting it out to bid for engineering firms to come in and look into that, or are we just exclusively just going to hand it over to George?
So just up there today, he's going to be at the, he wants to be at the next workshop. He's gathering the data, so he can provide the village with an estimate cost. And then at that point, you have an idea what it would be, and then you can make a decision how you want to move forward.
Yeah, it's going to be a big number, because there's a lot of work there for engineering. And George is, is very well-trained at our plant. I get it, I get it. But it is a big number, so it's going to be a big part of our expenses there. So. Another thing is, I, I was a part of the board that adopted the overlay C1, C2 district. And, and I did get an email from you, and I completely forgot about it, and I would have liked to gone as well. You know, I, I also would like to congratulate Sean Murray and Rich Funchen, who also were a part of that, adopting that C1, C2. Because without that adoption, like Steve said, we, we transitioned a little bit. We had to make an amendment to the, the overlay to accommodate for AMS. But that ball would have never got rolling if that process wasn't completed the way it was. So all that were involved, I have to commend them. And I, I wish I would have remembered, because I would have liked to have gone. But there was, there was a few of us that were involved, and I'm glad that we did, because the corridor, there is a lot of possibilities that can go on in that corridor because of that overlay adoption. So I'm excited to see what comes out of it after this. But anyway, thank you, Mayor, for going and, and representing us at the, at this event.
So yeah, I, I did mention the Planning and Zoning Board chairmans, but yes, you're right. It was, it was you, it was myself, it was Sean Murray, it was Rich Funchen, and Nick Zachary were on the board, and we, you know, Anthony, we went back and forth on many things with that, especially the retail. But we, we did come to some type of a consensus in the end, and.
Well, the retail was a big, big part of that.
Yeah.
And, you know, it was a little, I'm glad that we agreed on it, but it just, it was, it was hard to put it together.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the floor? No? Okay, all right. Are you sure? Is Eileen on this evening, or no?
I don't think we have anybody on.
Yeah, okay. That's all right. The weather's beautiful, people are busy. Get it?
Nope.
All right. All right. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to go into executive, executive session for negotiation, contractual, and personnel. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Have a great Buchanan day.